Call to order, the fourteenth regular meeting of Lynn City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Sia.
Present.
Present Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
Present Counsel Lozey.
Present.
Present Counsel Annette.
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan. Absent Counsel Walsh.
Present.
Present, ten present.
Could you please rise? If I would...
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Sia.
I'd like all of us to keep Billy Trahan in our thoughts and prayers and his family as well, and hope for a speedy recovery.
We'll do.
Also like to acknowledge David Anderson, brother of Calvin Anderson. Thoughts and prayers with the family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, we'd like to welcome a guest. Irene Camarinos is here. She's a classical high student in honors government. Irene's watching us for the day. Nice to meet you, Irene. Good luck in your studies. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the August sixteenth and August thirtieth meeting? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Communications.
We have a communication from our honor, the mayor. Dear councilors pursuant to my authority on dissection two dash three and three dash nine of the Lynn City Charter, I hereby reappoint Lisa J. Nerrick to the position of DPW Associate Commissioner, subject to council approval. Said appointment shall take effect upon council approval.
Approve.
A motion is made to approve and seconded. Does anyone in the audience have any glowing things to say about...oh, we do. Commissioner Andy Hall. Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
My name's Andrew Hall. I'm the Commissioner of Public Works and I live at 24 Ferris Road. I'd like to speak in favor of this action. Ms. Nerrick is a hardworking, dedicated employee. She's a valuable part of our team at DPW and we're lucky to have her. Again, my name's Andrew Hall and I'm highly in favor of the reappointment of Lisa Nerrick as Associate Commissioner of the Lynn Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street, and what he said is right on. I thought she ran things pretty much anyway.
Thank you, Calvin. Would anyone else like to say any glowing things about Ms. Nerrick? No? Any other questions? Please.
Under discussion, Mr. President.
Yes.
So I'd like to concur with Commissioner Hall, and I will give you one brief example of the work and work ethic of Lisa Nerrick. I recall in the summer that Lisa was there with Allison Perry from the Community Development Department, setting up for a movie night at Goldfish Pond, and that movie extended from 7:00 PM, and Lisa did not leave until the last car and last folks were leaving the premises well after midnight, as I recall. And just to let you know, the following morning was a Saturday morning when there was a community day down at the DPW, a dumpster day, and Lisa was also there at her duty way before the scheduled 7:00 AM for residents to come down to the DPW and dispose of their goods. So I think when you talk about a strong work ethic and you talk about a family history like Lisa and the Nerrick family have had in the city of Lynn, we are very fortunate to have her as a public servant, and she definitely has gained my support in my short-term tenure as a counselor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have too many, too much to note. Congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you very much, and I would just also like to extend a gratitude from many people in the city of Lynn. Lisa, you're always available when we need you, even when I called you about 10 minutes ago about some trash that hasn't been picked up down on Suck Cliff. I appreciate, I appreciate that you get on it right away. All the councilors here, if I can speak for them as well, we really appreciate the hard work that you do, and we look forward to a continued successful career of you down at the DPW. And Andy was speaking in favor of you today. I think he's a little nervous that maybe one day you might pop him out of the big seat, but... You have a great working relationship. We're honored to have you. Look forward to voting in favor. So with that being said, motion is made to approve and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call and confirmation.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre.
Emphatically yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey.
Lisa Nerrick, yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan. Absent Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes.
Well, we'll make it eleven, because if Bill Trahan was here tonight, he'd want to... We're honorary eleven-oh. Thank you, Lisa. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
I'm sure if my mic's on.
Could you state your name and your address for the record? We're checking residency tonight, so...
Well, I'm Lisa Nerrick, 27 Tranfagile Ave. in Lynn, Mass., and I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue serving in the position as DPW Associate Commissioner. Working with the mayor, the city councilors, and the residents of Lynn is an honor. I'm very proud of the dedicated DPW employees I have worked with over the many years. Working together as a department generates progress and gets many things accomplished. I am humbled and honored, given me, and continuing to serve the best of my ability as DPW Associate Commissioner, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And now that you're confirmed, you don't have to sit for the rest of the meeting. You guys can take off. Don't worry about it. Go ahead. All right. Other communications, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Dear councilors, I'm hereby reappointing Mr. Nicholas Capano to the Lynn Disability Commission. Mr. Capano's term is effective immediately and will expire on July 12, 2019. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion made to approve and seconded.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Dear councilors, I'm hereby reappointing Ms. Lisa Malone to the Lynn Disability Commission. Ms. Malone's term is effective immediately and will expire on July 12, 2019. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
Approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Dear councilors, I'm hereby reappointing Ms. Kelly Martin to the Lynn Disability Commission. Ms. Martin's term is effective immediately and will expire on July 12, 2019.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Dear councilors, I'm hereby reappoint...sorry, hereby appointing Mr. Patrick Cogan to the Lynn Disability Commission. Mr. Cogan's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 9, 2019.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Dear councilors, I am hereby appointing Ms. Janine Lamanna to the Lynn Library Board of Trustees. Her term is effective immediately and will expire on April 1, 2019.
What's the wish of the council? Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I would note that Ms. Lamanna is in the audience with us tonight. We wish you best of luck in serving on the Board of Trustees of the library.
Could Jim kiss his bride?
Next.
Dear councilors, I am hereby reappointing Ms. Patricia Barton as Chairperson of the License Commission. Ms. Barton's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 1, 2022.
What's the wish of the council? Motion has been made to second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No?
Abstain.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Dear councilors, I'm hereby appointing Joseph Smart to the Public Art Commission. The term is effective immediately and will expire on August 16, 2018. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
Approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Public hearings. First petition is a petition of Central Square, Otis 10 slash Food Truck on Premises, Francisco Menezes, for permission to allow food trucks to park on premises at 3 to 11 Mount Vernon Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. In favor, in favor. Seeing no one in favor, except for one man.
Well, yes, Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I've spoken up in favor of this before. I think this is a new public hearing about the same thing, but now that we got our spiffy new Inspection Services rules in order, I'm even more emphatic about this.
Thank you very much.
I support this. It's long overdue.
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor of the public hearing for those in opposition? Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas.
I spoke with Cisco who would like to do this down on Mount Vernon Street, and I'd like to try and give him a trial period for 30 days, just to see how it works out for the first 30 days. Motion to grant for 30 days.
Motion has been made to approve and seconded. Counselor Lozey, discussion?
Is that, is that something we can do for 30 days and then...I'm not sure I'm in favor of the trucks, but I...could I, through the chair, ask the law department, is that something that we could do, or is that effectively giving them full permission if we do even a 30-day?
This is a valid condition on the special permit. You can limit it in duration, and it would be appropriate motion if that's the will of the council.
That we can do a 30-day and then vote again for a permanent?
Permanent or deny. It's a trial run according to Counsel Chakoudas. But putting a time limit is a valid condition that's been upheld by courts in the Commonwealth.
That's part of the ordinance too, isn't it? Thirty, sixty, ninety?
Don't recall that if it was part, but it may, it may have been.
Yeah, I...
Any other questions?
Well, I'm just very ambivalent about voting for this, that I know the trend is moving that way, but I just foresee a lot of problems at our parks and locations, and I think...I'm sorry, I can't support it at this time.
Any other questions? Counsel Sia.
Thank you. It's...they can't be on public ways, correct, Attorney Lamanna? They have to be on private properties?
Correct. The ordinance is passed by this council, it cannot...food truck cannot be located on a public way. It would have to be located on a private way, private property.
Just another clarifying question. Would we have hours of operation on the food...I wasn't familiar with what we said for hours, or can they do it breakfast, lunch, dinner, or what is going to be? Any stipulations on hours?
We can put stipulations on it if we want. Why don't we do...
They actually have hours on their application. It's for seven days, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM during the week, and 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM on Friday and Saturday.
Can we change that? I'd like to change that.
It says 3 to 11 here.
Yeah, that's...
3 to 11 is the address.
That's the address of Mount Vernon Street.
It's a long time.
If I may ask a few questions of the attorney unless there's any objection, as you ponder the hours. If there's a 20-day appeal process and we issue it for 30 days, how does...does the 30 days start after the 20-day appeal process?
30 days would start after the 20-day appeal process, correct?
This would start in October.
Correct.
And regarding the public ways, in this particular location, although it is privately owned, it is indiscernible or virtually identical to public ways that are adjacent to it and next to it with regards to parking, and Mount Vernon Street. So legally, or the definition of public way, what was your opinion of what this property is?
By the naked eye, it would appear to the average citizen that it is a public way. However, the title searches have confirmed that it is private, privately owned property. But naked eye, driving in the area, I think the average citizen in Lynn would assume it was a public way.
What would the Lynn police say if they were going to make a stop there? What would they classify it as?
I think a judge in a black robe, if there was an arrest for OUI, would say that the Commonwealth didn't meet their burden, that this is a public way.
And who maintains it right now? Plowing, sweeping, shoveling?
Mr. Hall left. I do not have the, I do not know the answer to that. Legally, it should not be the city, but it is possible that the city does maintain it. That is possible, because as I said, by the naked eye, it does appear to be a public, a public way.
Counsel Chakoudas.
Well, I'd like to change the hours on that. What was...can you read those hours again for me, please?
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the weekdays, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, which would be midnight Friday and Saturday.
I'd like to change the weekends, 7:00 AM to...I think, 8:00 PM? I'd say 8:00 PM.
On weekends?
On weekends, yeah. I don't want to go any later than that.
And weekdays?
Weekdays, we'll keep it seven. And again, this is a trial period, and when they do have a truck that wants to go there, next step is it has to go through Inspection Services for us to be inspected, to make sure everything is up to code.
Any other further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
No.
No. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey.
No.
No. Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan. Absent Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, public hearing.
Petition of Primo Pizza and Roast Beef for Raphael Francis for permission for assigned permit at 200 Franklin Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council? Counsel Chakoudas.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Petition of National Grid, Chris Radzig, for permission to install approximately 85 feet plus a minus a 2 to 5 feet PVC conduit encased in concrete from pole number three, Marion Street, to an existing manhole on Federal Street.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone from National Grid wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from National Grid wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor? Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Walsh.
Does nobody here from National Grid answer any questions on this?
I don't see anyone from National Grid here, unless someone's from National Grid. One, two, three, four. I know Jeffrey's not. Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to table.
Motion to table. Unavatable. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sia.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Annette.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan. Absent Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Ten yes. Petition of Comcast, Timothy Broderick, commission to place one 4-inch PVC conduit from existing sidewalk vault on Willow Street, 50 feet plus a minus in a southwesterly direction to the property of 23 Central Ave.
I'm going to open the public hearing for Mr. Broderick to come up here and dazzle us with his testimony.
Good evening. Timothy Broderick, Comcast, 9B Forbes Road in Woburn, here in favor of the petition.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition.
I'm sure Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I've been a client of Comcast for many years. They want your new business, they don't take care of their old business. I think before this council approves anymore, that they not only put the table this one, go out and take a look at it, and make sure we rewrite the rules, so that they start paving the streets, at least from the central line over. None of this trenching that so many councilors here have been rising in opposition to. But senior citizens all over our city should rise in opposition to this, and let's get a class action suit together. We need nine more people. Anybody out there? Those blue-shirted men and women, the Council on Aging, I'm sure you're victims of this company too. They're going to cry a financial hardship. They build those big buildings in Philadelphia, the biggest one. They own NBC. Some of us even boycott the network because we loathe this company so much. Absolutely unconscionable how they treat people. They might sound good, they might sound like they're treating you to like services and entertainment, but you just try. I had a guy climb my pole. They said, "They've been lying to you." This is the guy that works for this company that said that they lied to me for five years because they kept sending their independent contractors that switched little boxes because they get paid by the job. They get as many done in a day, it's more power to them. Then the real guy from the real corporation comes, climbs the pole, and he says, "Hi, my name's..." I won't tell his name, although it's a matter of record with the FCC, because I don't want to get him in trouble. But he came down and he says, "This company's been lying to you for years, because I just switched something that has been open to the elements for every rein for the past five years, maybe 20 years," he said, "and I probably just fixed six of your neighbors that didn't even know they were having bad problems. And I just came from six months of absolute no Wi-Fi service. They finally fiddled something at some office somewhere, after lying to me and cheating to me, now it's finally working." Anyway, end of story. They owe me thousands of dollars of sweat equity time, and they say I'm never going to get it. So anyway, deny them. Let's start a committee. Let's get a class action against Comcast."
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing no one else in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. Counsel Chakoudas.
I just have one question. What is this work for on 23 Central?
There's a building being rehabbed at 23 Central Ave. There's going to be commercial on the first floor, and then condominiums, I believe, up on the additional floors above.
This is stuff they need in this building to...
Yes, they've requested our service there. It's 50-something-plus units, I think.
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're going to take several petitions from petitioner Light Tower, Ryan McDonald.
They're all for to provide internet service to Lynn Community Health Services at various addresses.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. Ryan McDonald from Access Engineering out of Westboro, Massachusetts, here on behalf of Light Tower Fiber Networks.
Thank you. You may have some questions if you want to sit relatively close to the microphone. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those in opposition. Opposition, opposition. Seeing no one in opposition? I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What is your wish of the council?
Question to the table.
Second.
That's not...
Motion.
Not debatable.
Hold on. I lucked out. Motion has been made to withdraw the table. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Counsel Calucci, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question. How are you doing this? Are you going...you're not digging up the street, I hope?
Yeah, we're going to sock up the street. We're going to dig a trench 24 inches deep, one foot wide.
You know, it's sad because we just got Baldwin Street repaved last summer. Now we have to get...how long is this going to be?
As far as dig Baldwin Street, that was, I think it's like an 89-foot dig, I believe, plus or minus. Baldwin Street, this is for 269 Union, is that correct?
Yeah.
269 Union. We'll be coming from the intersection. Right in the intersection of Baldwin Street and Union Street. And we'll be penetrating as close to the building as we can get. We won't be...
You can individually break them up if you'd like.
I think it's better because...
Sure.
We're going to break them up individually. The first one we're going to talk about, and we're going to open up the public hearing again, is relative to 29 Market Street for Lynn Community Health Center.
29 Market Street is approximately 90 feet.
Okay, that's Counsel Capano.
Yes. Yes. So I mean, just looking at all these, it looks like it...these are all to provide internet service to Lynn Community Health.
Yes, to link community health.
I imagine they must have internet service now, right?
They do, but we're going to be linking all their, all their buildings together, and so they have one all-integrated internet system.
So I think the concerns that, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but straight down the street and right across into the building.
Yeah, so I, I don't know. I have the same concerns as everyone else. I want them to have internet service, you know, the Lynn Community Health Center, they do good work in the city, obviously, but I have the same concerns as everyone else. When, when, you know, when the work is done...
Yeah.
It never looks right, you know?
I understand.
You know, it's, you know, we did, like Counselor Calucci was talking about, we just did Pleasant Street, and there was some work down on Pleasant Street, and there's like a sinkhole there now. You know, we had the street paved, and then there was some work down on there for National Grid, and there's like a sinkhole there. And when I rode by going to work, there's a kid that fell, you know, on his bike. I had to help him up, because it's, no one comes back to fix this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I don't know what the answer is, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's a petition here. I just don't feel comfortable approving all these, I mean, you say it's a small job, 90 feet here, 80 feet there, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
You know? And when it doesn't look right when you're done, especially when you just have the street paved, like Baldwin, Baldwin Street, I mean, I don't feel comfortable approving them, you know?
Yeah, I mean...
That's the, that's the, you know, that's the agenda we all have.
Light Tower was, you know, more than willing to, you know, to provide any concessions that you need to, that you guys...
I'm sorry, I can't...
I'm sorry. Light Tower was more than willing to work with you on any concessions that you need to make. The problem with, you know, paving and the, and the trenches sinking is that that's just has to do with compaction, and it has nothing to do with the paving. You know, if you don't compact it right, it's obviously going to sink. You know what I mean?
I know, but, you know, whether it's, you know, a trench, a patch, or, you know, it's just really hard to get a hold of anyone from National Grid, like it was a lot easier years ago.
Right.
You know, and it's not like someone rushes right down to fix it, you know?
Yeah. I understand.
Counselor Lozey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. My question is for Mr. McDonald. Are you familiar with the DPW requirements on trenching?
We have licensed guys, licensed pipe layers that we deal with on the construction companies that we work with.
So you rely on them? You're not personally familiar with that process?
I know every town is different. I personally don't know about the city of Lynn.
Yeah, there is a, a process to follow, and I think what's happening is you won't know that the, that they didn't follow it until three, four, five years later.
Exactly.
Then you'll have a sunken trench.
Right.
You know, I don't know if my colleagues would be in favor of this, but I think if we're headed towards a table, I think what I would suggest is, are you familiar with an infrared trenching process?
What, what do you mean by infrared?
Well, that's a, it's an upgrade from an ordinary trench or patch, and it's more expensive, but it's almost guaranteed not to settle or sink.
Okay, I can definitely look into that if that's something...
Yeah, I think, I think if, if whatever we do here as a result, I think that's something I hope that this council moves towards in requiring. If, particularly what you're describing, are not along the curb, they're more diagonal cuts, and it's more difficult, for, for instance, a curb cut, you can replace it from the end of the cut to the curb.
Up to the curb. Yeah, but...
When you go diagonal, particularly on a, on a good road, it's only a matter of a few years that that becomes a baboom, baboom, every time, so...
I mean, we, we try not to go diagonal. We'd like 90-degree angles.
But in this case, you do have to...
There is something that we have to do come across the intersection.
Yeah. Okay, I, I just would like to, you know, point that out, that...
Sure. One of the things we do do is we mark our trenches with medallions. We put them actually in the pavement, so if it ever sank, you could actually go out there and see that, see that there's a...
I'm sorry, that you do what?
We put a medallion in our trenches.
How, what, like one for every 100 feet, or?
Every turn.
For each trench you do, whether it's 100 or 200 feet?
We mark every, every 50 feet or 25 feet with a medallion that we put right in the pavement. But once again, if you go repave the whole street, you lose those medallions.
Yeah. How long have, has Comcast done that?
We're not Comcast, we're Light Tower Fiber Networks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so how long has National Grid done that?
We don't work for National Grid.
All right.
We're Light Tower Fiber Networks.
The Light Tower.
We do it in the city of Boston, a lot. It's common in the city of Boston. We, we mark our trenches with little medallions, but unfortunately, when you go repave the road, you lose it. That's the only, you know, that's the only way that you can identify it, until you repave the road.
Okay, well, that's, those are my comments.
Counselor Seer has I'm up first.
Thank you. Are you doing work right now on Lewis Street?
Lewis Street? No, nothing at all.
I think the council should have the right, because I agree with Counselor Capano, and I know where Counselor Lozey was going. Every sale time that, no matter what company it is that comes into the city, digs a trench, within two or three years, we're the guys that have to deal with it, and we can't get the companies to come back and fix it. And the DPW doesn't have the money to go back or the resources to fix it, and as Mr. Anderson was saying, there are so many trenches in the city that are in such deplorable conditions now, and no matter when we put stipulations on whatever company it is, they don't follow it. And even though they're going to go in front of the DPW, and there are regulations and rules that they have to follow, there, even the DPW's not always up on the situation of the street that they're digging in, because it's, it's almost impossible for them to go out and check every single one of them. I, I think we should table this and have someone from the DPW come here when they're here, and to be able to make sure we're all on the same page, so that when there is a problem down the road, we have some kind of recourse to it. It's great they put a medallion in the street, wherever it is that they're doing, but, you know, everywhere you go, within a year after you get a brand-new street, and we've got an awful lot of them this year, you're driving down the road, baboom, 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 baboom. So, that's just my suggestion.
Any other discussion? Counselor Walsh.
Just, I just want to say I agree with, with Mr. Seer and Mr. Capano. It's just, it's, it's, as a new counselor, it's one of the biggest things that I've been getting, these guys go and dig the streets up, and they're just not being replaced correctly. So, I would, I would be in favor of tabling this also.
Counselor Barton?
Mr. President, I think we're all on the same page. I mean, if they're not going to pave the street till at least the middle of the street to the curbstone, or curbstone, or curbstone, I think we got to stop.
I'll take that in form of a motion to table.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, undebatable.
I'll, I'll...
We'll pull back the rules for just one more time. Counselor Capano?
Yeah, I, I agree with the motion to table, but also, I'd like to make a motion that we look at the rules that DPW has now, and maybe, I don't know if it's through Public Property or one of the committees...
Public Works.
The other, Public Works, the idea of incorporating that infrared idea. I know we talk about this all the time, and we never really, you know, maybe incorporating that into their rules, you know, that the utility companies would have to follow, you know, so...
No need for a motion, Counselor Capano. We'll take that as an indication from Counselor Capano to Chairman Trahan, that he would like the Public Works Committee to address the DPW manual on street openings and closures. Aside from that, Counselor Buzzy Barton, do you have a motion that you want to make again?
Second.
Motion made to table?
Motion to table.
Again, undebatable. Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Chakotis?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Trahan, absent. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Ten yeses.
Just wait one second.
Sure, no problem.
We're going to have our assistant administrator, Terry Young, give you some information on how to contact us.
Sure.
We'll set up further meetings, and we'll discuss further.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Thank you. You knew more than most people who come in here, by the way, so thank you.
I have several meetings to be, public hearings to be set down. If there's no objection, I will read them all together.
These are all things to be put down for a public hearing?
These are just to be put down for a public hearing.
We got to do it anyways, so unless there's any objection, we'll take them all at once. She'll move.
Petition to Taco Bell Brian Rector for permission for assigned permit at 124 Boston Street. Petition to Spina's Autobody Alfred Spina for use of Autobody Shop at existing Auto Repair Shop at 164 Blossom Street. Hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Petition to Comcast Timothy Broderick for permission to intercept existing conduit on Willow Street and place new manhole. From new manhole, place one three-inch PVC conduit 45 plus and minus feet in a north-est direction to property of 51 Willow Street. Petition of Mass Telepage Maria Suarez for permission for assigned permit at 875 Western Avenue. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six petitions for mobility for permission to install backhaul transport equipment on a proposed 70-plus-feet utility pole in a public way.
This is just a motion to put it down?
Set it down.
Motion made and set down? Favor say aye.